You tell me more. Okay, I'd like to call together this technology subcommittee meeting. Can you please pull the roll?
Mr. Agnew?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Just for the adification of the public, Ms. Larrabee is on Google Meet or Zoom, so she'll be joining us remotely. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Is there any citizen input?
There is no.
There's no citizen input today. We're gonna jump right into the first item, which is a discussion. Digital platforms. Oh, sorry, sorts of platforms, thank you. Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
My kid's laughing at me. They have no idea what I'm doing on this one.
So first item is digital platforms and usage analysis. Madam Superintendent.
Okay, I'm going to actually turn that over to, um, to Mr. Farias, who's going to start us off. I, I just wanna say, what we did here is we cleaned it up because last time when we met, um, the spreadsheet was all over the place, right? And when Frank and Scott, myself, Dr. Curly met, we wanted to make sure we separated some of these platforms I use by adults in order to teach, right? Some of it is like our assessment platform, et cetera, and some of it is, you know, to, um, for tier two or tier two, uh, tier three instructions. So we want to make sure, and some of it comes with our core curriculum, is part of our core curriculum. So I wanted to separate all of that so that you would actually see, because it looked initially like it was a, a big mishmash.
I think we did it, well, the team did a good job breaking it out and segregated. It wa- it was messy. It kinda looked like we had more. When we, when we verbalized what we were using and what we were doing with each one, it didn't seem as massive. With that being said, we dwindled it down. We, we, at the bottom of the...
I think he has both pages.
I, I made a, a thing that says sunsetting, so that means we're either gonna do away with that software. We've, we've had discussions, the curriculum team with curriculum leaders at the schools, principals, and everyone agrees that some of this stuff is redundant. They've agreed to get rid of those items that are at the bottom of the spreadsheet. Some of them are grant funded and they won't be done. I think this is year two of three Verizon paid for, um, the three-year, um, platform. When that ends, those will sunset and they'll, they'll begin to not use that. We kinda wrote what subject, uh, what levels they were, they're being used at. We didn't get a lot of the cost, like, some of the costs, it was like...
Included, including it, it was included in the curriculum purchases, so it was like when Tracy, you know, purchased the curriculum packages, the digital piece was included in that price, so there was no yearly fee for that software.
Yeah, so it's tough to break out. The other, the other kinda big finds that we came to the, we came to the conclusion, like, two, um... Paper is a huge expense. We, we had great vision for it. It kinda hasn't been deployed, hasn't been, hasn't taken off like we thought it would. So we're thinking maybe next year to scale that back. I think we have six thousand accounts to twelve hundred accounts and assign them as needed. Like if a school, give me to the guidance council, no one at home really can work with them. There's no older sibling or parent at home that working, like, that might be a nice resource for them to reach out, be able to, uh, chat, send a message and get, um, twenty-four seven support outside of the classroom. Do we need six thousand accounts? No, that, that'll cut that cost down. Dreambox was another big ticket item that we've been using for a while. Kinda, it's been, I don't, I'm not the math expert, but I think it's more, it was more of a comfort. It was like a, a comfort thing, like, we've always used it, how can we not? But there's different programs have come out, emerged, they've shown that they've been successful at some of the schools, so, um, S T math will be going forward, what they use, um, across the board. But any other, any of the other programs, if you want in-depth, like, there's a little summary, but e- everyone.
Yep. What is on page two where it's, it looks like there's a link where we could look at on the, uh, that, that's where we would see the usage? And how is that broken out as far as, I haven't looked at it yet, but... So if I clicked on those links, am I gonna see usage by school, by, um, you know?
So it's, I think it was two mon- it was, let me open one up.
It, it would...
April.
It's probably by school, though.
Yes.
Yeah, it's broken out by school. It's basic, it's not, um, there's no teacher's names. It's basically like how many logins, how many, um... I know Imagine Learning was broken up, actually like, this is what's being used, this is the goal that we were, were targeting at. This is how much of that goal we mapped, but it's broken out by school.
And I only ask that because we don't need to go into detail on all these at the subcommittee, but this is a good report. But I think we need to, like, I have a lot of questions on what is here now, but I think we can, between now and the full meeting, get some of those answers of like how much money it costs. I think that is important for us to see.
Yeah.
What are we actually spending? What are we actually saving? What, combining that with the usage, so if we're spending short money and a lot of usage, that's a great program. You know, like, we, I've never felt comfortable with, uh, oh yeah, that's what we're using and we're all using it with fidelity. And that, so that's been my, um, impetus, asking some of these questions. So it's not to, you're all are the experts, but I think sometimes we're all over the place and we need to get focused so we know which programs work and which, uh, which don't. Ms. Larrabee, do you have any questions on this?
I do. Um, I, I really do appreciate, uh, how you guys pulled this together. Um, I don't know if this question or comment would fall under, um, curriculum and, and... But I would like to, uh, read it as if, like, all the math, uh, curriculum and what they're using fall under math and all the English, E L A, instead of having to go all the way to the right to see what it is, I'd like to see it laid out under subject and how many schools are using it. I think it, it would just be easier. We're not, I don't wanna speak to anybody else. I'm not as familiar as obviously you guys are, as, as I'm still getting to know what we're using and for what curriculum. So I think it's just under, say, math, English, E L A, uh, and whatever else we're using right off the top of my head. Um, I would appreciate it to be, uh, presented like that, but...
We can create a table.
No mistake, not all. I mean, this helped a lot, uh, but, um, it was, it was tough to navigate. And, and, and because you have math up here with elementary, then you'd have to go find the math down there for middle school. And some of it said district. What, what's the diff- uh, difference, uh, superintendent between district and all schools? That was on there a couple times.
Because some of those are, are programs that we use as a district for the adults, right? So some of that is, uh, like, uh, illuminate that, those are by district leadership. We all use it. And so it's not, um, when we say in schools, like, so if it's a, uh, program that's used by students to facilitate and, and enhance learning, or if it's a, a district program that we're using to support what we, the work that we do. Like illuminate is to, is a data collection, like we, we housing. We can break that down. We, what we'll do is we'll break it down, we'll use this and break it down by content and get it to you for Friday, in the Friday email. Well, that's tomorrow, but we might be able to do that. Um, so we'll get it, uh, we'll get that information for, for, uh, that, that's a good point.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Bailey, do you have any questions on that?
No, not really. Uh, I think, I mean, from the last meeting, this laid out a ton and, you know, as, uh, Mimi was saying, I don't, um... I think with things being laid out in subject, it'd be a little bit more organized, um, to see things. Uh, my biggest thing is just always, like I say, consistency, to make sure that, um, you know, if something's successful in one area, why not just have it across the district, so.
Thank you. So my only comments on it would be, uh, the financial costs, I think would be important to have. Uh, I think we can make this a little more user-friendly as far as like size and like how it looks. I agree with Ms. Larrabee, by subject would be great, but this is a good first step and then, like, as we go, we're gonna get into, like, a little more details. The thing that I'm concerned about is fidelity of use across the district. So I've heard way too many times in this district that we have, we're paying for something and we're not using it. We're not using it with fidelity, or one school using one and another school's using another, so we can never figure out what is working. So I think you're on the right track to try to streamline that, to make sure that that happens. What I would ask as, and it doesn't have to be for this month, but I think a goal of this would be to just send a report out once a month, once we get it, right? So we say, oh, here's the ten or twenty curriculum programs that we're using online. So without even having a meeting, we should get a, uh, like a one pager or a dashboard or something to say, here's the usage by school of all of whatever these things are. So we think that a school should be using X. Here's what the monthly report shows, because it's gonna hold people accountable to making sure that they're doing it right. And if they're not and the program is not working or whatever they need to tell you, then you need to tell us, we're gonna cancel it. We pay for things in this district, just wasted money because it's the flavor of the month. That's an editorial by me, but that's what I've, I've felt like it's been, oh, sounds good, this is good, like you said that tutor in one, expensive. I think that was...
Well, the intention, so I, I will say that the intention of that was good, right? We were coming out of COVID. It was during COVID that we, um, had explored that. That was an online tutoring program. It was, our goal was to provide access to all of our students. Not every parent can afford to get a tutor for their child, right? And not everybody, everybody has the ability to help their child with their work. So this, we researched this, many districts are using it. It was, you know, uh, one of the things that was, um, uh, we had, uh, attended, uh, some, uh, demos on it and we thought, okay, this is an opportunity for our kids, it's an opportunity for our families. Yes, Frank is absolutely right. We thought it was gonna be more widely received than it wasn't, and it's like everything else. We learned from the experience. It wasn't, so, we, first we wanted to make it available for all secondary, sixth through twelfth, and say, okay, so if, if a, a tenth grader works at McDonald's and gets home at nine o'clock and they need help with their algebra homework, they're gonna be able to access that tutor on twenty-four seven. Parents sign a release, all of that stuff. It wasn't as widely received. It was year one. I don't know if it's just because of implementation, but we, the good part about going through this process is that we actually went through every single program. How are we using it? What are we using it? Across the board. Yes, we need to have consistency. We also need to know that we have some, uh, specific populations in different schools. They might use something that other schools don't use, and you're gonna see those anomalies. But that, the intention was good. Um, we still, we still think it, it, we need that access, but we're gonna scale it back. Maybe we don't have every single sixth through twelfth grader, but we're gonna have licenses available at every school and we're going to try to encourage students who may need that access to be able to utilize it. But we're gonna scale it back and learn from that experience.
The piece that I, I still don't understand is that if we're gonna pick a program, like you said, go through this process, I would assume that if it was, like you said, middle school and high school.
Yep.
So I would assume that the middle school and high school administrations were part of that process. So if I'm part of that process and I tell you as superintendent, we'd like to get this program for children that have the needs, which I agree to have, then it's on me, as the administrator, to make sure that we're using what we asked you to pay for and asked the school committee to pay for. And I think that's where the missing link has come in. Whereas we gotta say, if, if you're the principal and you wanted a program, you sure we're gonna use it, it's a good program, you think it's good, yes, okay. So then we need to follow up to say, are you using it? Because we know at the middle school and at the high school, we have many kids that are still struggling. They work, they don't have, they need a tutor. Why are they not using it? So if everybody was perfect and doing great, we wouldn't have needed the program in the first place. So I just think that's the missing link. It's not trying to give anybody a hard time, but I do think that if we're gonna say, oh, we'll use this program, then we're gonna use it. That's, would be my, no matter what it is, whether it's on these, so I do think this is much better. Let's just keep, keep the process going and, um, maybe even if you tweak it and send it to us and then we can, let's tweak it again before the two weeks so that we don't have to meet on it. Anything else on this? Mimi, you're good? Okay, this part's all set. Anybody that needs to leave, feel free to, to leave and move on to the next, uh, agenda item. The organizational chart, including Fred TV.
So we took your suggestions after the last meeting and we cleaned it up and we tried to break it down. You'll see on the, the graph, it's by color, so, um, pink is the technology integration side. Uh, purple is the SIMs side. Blue is the technology services side. Uh, light green is Fred TV, FRG TV, and then you'll notice there's a little dock green box that's, um, our individual that runs the copy center for the district. Um, you'll notice that on the list, there are open positions. Those are the positions that were approved at the last meeting that we will be, um, posting in the near future. It's broken down by content area, so any suggestions that you may have or comments, we can continue to tweak the document.
Any questions on, uh, summary?
No, not right now, no.
Mr. Bailey?
I think this looks a lot cleaner than it did before. I think it looks great, to be completely honest.
Thank you.
I would agree. I think this is a good, um, document. I know we talked about having this for all schools, and you know what I mean? So it just helps to see, you know, sort of what happens and who's under who, you know, and all that stuff. I did notice that under the high school, I had mentioned that I think all facilitators need to be under the thing. So are these people that are on here working, like, that's the, for instance, it says, uh, high school facilitator and the same job description, but under, is it, are those three people like equal or is that under?
No, they're equal.
It's just for size of the...
It's just for size of the document, yeah. And, and just so you know, we, I, I purchased software so that we could do this and we're actually planning on using it for the, for everyone, so everyone will have a, you know, the same look across the district.
Yep. I would just, I know you said it's the software and stuff, but you get what I'm saying? It looks like as if the person on the top is the, like, the leader of the other two, so even if you have to shrink the, um...
I'll shrink the boxes so that it looks...
Or put the same, like, maybe in that one box, you put the three people's names if they have the same title so that it, it makes it look like they're, uh, sort of all equal.
I can do that and I can, I, we can have it sent to, you know, the Friday email. That's a very quick fix.
Yep. The, um, the only other question I had was going back to that same one, so the gentleman that's listed here, is he a district-wide facilitator at the high school? So I see Elizabeth Lewis and then Marcus Hauptman as the second person, and then there's an open position. So there's three high school facilitators, you know, per, positions. Are these two actually doing high school tech facilitator work, like the ones at the middle school, like are they equal to what they're doing? So they're all credentialed, whatever that means for the, we're all, they're all equally credentialed to, I guess, if they're...
They're all, the credentials are, the required credentials are the same. People might be in a different place because somebody might be on a waiver and they're working towards that and we work like we do with anybody else, but, but, yes.
Like whatever the...
Right.
Correct. Yeah, I think that would, um, make sense. And now, is this for the budget? You have three now? Do you have an open position now or do you have, that's for July one?
That's for July one, those open positions. So anything that's on here that's open are the anticipated positions that we approved at the last meeting that will be posted after we discussed the salary matrix this meeting and the full committee in a few weeks.
Yeah, so, uh...
I can make that anticipated if it...
No, no, what I, my thought on that was just that these positions are hard to fill across this, like, everybody's struggling for, so we've talked about...
We're posting as anticipated ones.
Sort of anticipated and then I personally would say, pull the trigger when you need to, as far as I'm concerned. Even though the, like, it's next year in July, like, and as far as I'm concerned, then you say, you know what? Uh, Joe, Joe is a great employee and I would like to bring him on now, May tenth instead of May, you know, July one. As far as this member, all for it. When you say you think you've got a person that you want, I think, go, go for it before the July one, if need...
We agree. We, we are gonna talk about the matrix because we need that to happen and hopefully that's gonna be referred to the full committee so that we're gonna, we're gonna post them as anticipated and if that gets approved, then we'll be able to hire them immediately. I, I agree with you. We need to hire them as soon as we get, catch somebody.
Yeah, espe- especially, I mean, we've had discussions about how hard it is to fill these positions. I would rather get a jumpstart on, on some other districts and just actually just get people in so we can get going.
That would be much appreciated.
The, uh, only question I had was on the, um, we had talked about putting Fred TV under this, uh, the Office of Technology, so that's done because that's just a move that you can make. I'd like to at some point try to figure out, uh, like a longer-term plan on that whole green section so that we can look at, I know we tried to get it as a vote program and all that other stuff, but now that it's under this and then you have a new person at the high school, like, as far as I'm concerned, I think we need to get more, uh, instruction in that, out of that department. Not that anything's going bad, I just think there's a need for, for more of it as far as like being in the school side. So a lot of times we, we, I for one, can't, can't figure out, like, is it a, the district, you know, taping meetings, going here, going there? What, like, the school, like, maybe the dividing up of somehow, so we all know, here's what the people that are on the Fred TV pay for, you know, for school, school-based stuff, so that we can, oh yeah, well, that sounds good, that's working great. Let's have a second instructor. If the kids are getting a benefit out of that, let's get a third instructor. That's where I'm, what I'm saying. Not that it's gotta be, there's nothing wrong with it, but I think we haven't focused enough on the instructional, educational part of it so that we can say, no, let's get it to the middle schools, let's add an instructor, let's add a program, let's, that's, so that would be for future. But now that it's under you, you can, I guess, take it and run with it.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you very much. Good presentation. Next up is a discussion on the salary matrix for the technology department.
So you have in front of you the proposed ranges for the new positions. You also have some current positions in this packet. Um, then I'm just trying to align the salary structure to more of an industry standard. So again, we keep talking about training employees, getting some excellent employees. We train them, we work them up, and then they leave because they're able to get more money elsewhere. What I'm trying to do is build our capacity from within, train these individuals, but also hold on to these individuals. Um, so by doing this and looking at the salary ranges, um, I feel that we'll be able to build a team that will, um, continue to build the foundation that we've laid in the last few years and to allow the department to basically become self-sufficient. We rely on some contracted employees right now and some vendor help. With these new positions that you, a- as a group have already approved, now getting the salaries aligned, I think that will be in very good shape to become much more self-sufficient internally.
Any questions? Bailey?
No.
So I only had one, basically a comment, that I, I'm assuming that you all have worked on this relative to what other people are getting outside and as well as in- internally, like, uh, positions in the different departments. So what you're recommending is within budget, within the next year's budget, as well as taking into consideration what somebody gets in different...
Correct.
You know, sometimes I think we make decisions in one thing and we don't realize, well, if we pay this person this with this credential, then we don't realize it's creating a domino effect. So anytime we look at matrices and all this, I think we need to look at the whole district, which we haven't always done. Not so much in your department, but I think you understand what I'm saying. And, um, so if that's what this is, I support it. We need to keep people. And, um, I'll just once again reiterate that I believe that a lot of these positions should be union positions and I think there's work being done to check that out, but I would ask that you consider, continue to do that because to me, they need to be, um, union positions as well.
We actually, um, Mr. Cugan and I met with, um, F R A A to discuss some of them. Um, we're looking at, uh, if some of them would fit in there. I think that Scott and I have had many discussions about that. Um, a lot of these positions are twelve-month positions where we specifically want them as S N O's because they're, they're gonna have to have a flex, more flexible schedule, right? And really, um, a lot of it is they're managing programs or equipment, software, not necessarily people. But we are looking at those that may fit into that, um, and see where they fit, so we are looking at that.
Yeah, my, my only comment on that is any contract, like, any position that becomes part of the union, all areas of that are part of the new matrix, the new thing. So what you just described, one hundred percent can happen in a union contract as well. So they're not locked into certain different things. So we have a contract, there's a, people have a right to, you know, be in a union, but all of those things, which I agree with, flexibility, twelve-month employees, this, that can happen in the union. I think there's been a lot of, in this district, statements in the past about, whoa, this is not a union position, oh, that can't be done 'cause this doesn't, no, that's not the case at all. The positions get bargained with, this is a twelve-month employee with X amount of, like, all of that stuff can happen in the union. I want that publicly rec, on the record, that when I say this is a union, it's not to pigeonhole you or anybody else. That can happen. So people keep on saying, no, no, it's not, it's not. It can't. Because we have other unions that have people in it that have no, the name doesn't make, you know, just because it's the Administrators Association, doesn't mean that they have to be an administrator in a school. So we think that when the Administrators Association, but then we have a Teachers Association that has all kinds of positions that aren't teacher positions. So I just want it to be fair and equitable for everybody. And sometimes it helps to have a matrix in the contract versus the individual contract. So you're actually an employee, you've got long-term stability, you're not on a one-year contract. So when we talk about wanting to keep people, some of having them in a union means that they're gonna have stability. They're gonna have long-term, they're gonna understand it. So we keep on saying, let's give these guys a one-year contract. If you ask me to give you a one-year contract and his place is giving me a, a union contract for five or ten grand more or even equal money, I'm, I'm going to the other job. So I'm not just trying to say, like, let's put people in a union to box anybody in a corner. It, it'll help with stability, it'll help with people being retained. And then every time that we negotiate a contract with that entire union, we would address these every year. And S N O is like, we do it at a meeting, like, willy-nilly. So I, I think we're all on the same page of trying it, so I do appreciate it, but we need a vote to refer this to the full committee.
Motion for a court.
Motion made by Ms. Larrabee.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Bailey. All, all in favor? All opposed, so voting unanimous. And the last comment is three point zero four, Chromebook data.
All right, let me preface the conversation by, you know, stating that this is a work in progress. Uh, over the last eighteen months, we have ingested many Chromebooks into the environment. We are starting to lay the foundation and the frameworks for policies and procedures with the Chromebooks. You know, when I was brought in as C I O, I took some time to overlook and see how things ran. Um, and I can say that, you know, Maria and I have had many conversations at length and we have the vision for where we'd like to proceed with the Chromebook, um, I guess initiative, one-to-one initiative. But again, there are gonna be road bumps and hiccups. What I can tell you is, on the last page of that document, over the course of the last eighteen months, one thousand three hundred and thirty-six Chromebooks were deemed either unreparable by damage, accident. There may have been some malicious damage, or also when you have a Chromebook, there's a life expectancy, it's six to eight years. So a lot of these devices that have gone to greener pastures now were some of the first Chromebooks that we bought eight years ago. I can say that when it says sent out to A G I Repair, we brokered a deal with this company. They send us the packaging material, we send them the old Chromebook. They then Frankenstein whatever parts that can be used out of that device, not our manpower, free of charge. They take apart whatever device, you know, pieces that we need, but then also they give us a kitty. So for example, a used, uh, Chromebook screen maybe worth fifteen dollars on the open market, they give us a seven-dollar credit. So now with these newer Chromebooks, the parts are more expensive. I now have a real-time kitty that I can pur- purchase parts from and get overnighted to me. So if I have a student that breaks a screen, I now have the flexibility of getting parts quicker. So as we, over the course of this summer, start to de-provision and retire some of these older devices, the process will now be that they'll get boxed up and sent to this company so that we can, A, maybe get some of the parts from that device for ourselves, I'm not paying the manpower on it, but also build a kitty to get parts quicker. The one part that we see that dies the most are the power supplies. They're expensive. Kevin and I have had conversations off, you know, off the record about power supplies in schools. I'll have a kitty now that I can get them instantaneously. I don't have to go through the P O process, you know, the procurement process, because now I have an open kitty with this company and that's all they do. So that was huge to be able to, to work on that with that company. It's actually helping our techs tremendously as well. First page of the document is just the number of student Chromebooks that we have. I will say, if you look at our enrollment numbers, some of them look a little bit ballooned. That is because also we have in the districts in labs what are called Chrome bases. So it's a screen that's a Chromebook that's used in a lab, used in a classroom, might also be used in an office. It's stored in that container in the Google classroom, in the Google console. So those numbers may look a little bit ballooned in some of those areas. And also, you're gonna notice that some of our spares that we earmark for M-CAS testing, A-NET testing, they're also sitting in those containers. So, you know, Talbot, uh, Lord, for example, you know, twelve ninety, I think they have, their enrollment is not twelve ninety, it's not close, but they have a group of about three hundred machines that are readily available in the building at any time. So those numbers also will fluctuate. There's probably about twenty percent in those numbers that will be retired at the end of this school year. We have just under two thousand spe- We have just under two thousand spares on hand at the district um, stockpile, and we have another twenty four hundred on order. My game plan is to take smaller buildings, i.e. a Tanzi, a Watson, even a Sylvia. Remove devices in the summer, replace with new devices, then go through those devices from those buildings. Whatever are deemed ready to go back out, cleaned up, reconditioned, whatever or not, be sent off to A G I repair and retired. We're gonna get into the process and the next to it, every year, Kevin and I, Ken, Maria will budget in. That we're gonna be replacing these devices because again, Chromebooks have an end of life expectancy between six and seven years. Uh, also in the process, just as a aside, working on some more emergency connectivity funds, they just released a new window. I have a few weeks to work on that, my plan is to again, purchase more Chromebooks so that we can start to swap out these devices. The one piece that is nice, just for the committee and the public certification is, a Chromebook has a license. When you initially purchase that Chromebook, you've purchased the license, it's about thirty dollars for the license. When you de provision a device, you do not lose that license, so as I'm buying new devices, we've de provisioned. Just under fourteen hundred devices, I have fourteen hundred licenses. That when I purchase more Chromebooks, I do not have to purchase those licenses, so there is a cost statement. Uh, next page is staff devices, we've worked very diligently over the course of um. Covid to replace many of the staff devices with Chromebooks. I will say this, lesson learned when it comes to Chromebooks for teachers. They are basically a cell phone with a keyboard and a screen, so a lot of what we're seeing now. Is that the machine doesn't keep up with the computing power that a teacher needs to stream to the, you know, the T V in the classroom. To run a Google meet at the same time if needed, to word process and to email. So we have been internally, um, we've actually earmarked some of the emergency connectivity fund money from this past year. To start replacing some of these teacher devices with Windows based machines, we're gonna follow the model that we put in place at the high school. And you'll see that at the high school, Promethean board, hover cam, Windows based laptop for teacher. That's what we're gonna do now across the district, my goal in the department and for the district is to be able to standardize our devices. From K to twelve, that way everything is the same, it becomes more efficient for us. It makes everything easier as far as professional development, we can have a stockpile, so if your machine dies, I can get you a machine that day, no longer waiting. So on the Chromebook side for staff, lesson learned, plan there is, in the summer, as we replace these machines with Windows based machines. These become spares for buildings, they get reconditioned, same process, whatever can't be used, A G I repair, whatever else does not, we have spares. Next page is the bills program. I can get very granular with the numbers for you guys in this category because. We have a technician that is assigned to that building twenty four seven, they're there all the time, so if a Chromebook comes in and is damaged. Or if it goes out, the technician is there and aware of it. Um, what I can say about the repairs, you'll see that some buildings have more repairs than others. Samsung has been backlogged, so a lot of these devices that are out for repair are sitting on a workbench. At Samsung waiting on repair, what we've done on the district level is Maria and Tracy had asked me to. Uh, backfill those buildings with district devices, so that way a student would not be without a device in those buildings. So you can see that there are substantial number of loners on hand at Morton. That was also because um, at, for M cast, they're testing the whole building at the same time. Um, so we needed to make sure that they had the spares, so at any point in the Vills program where actually. Backfilling devices with non L T E devices, so that the building has the Chromebooks that they need daily. Um, we are getting to the point in the Chromebook program that um, some of the Samsung devices, we're seeing systematic issues. Batteries are one big example, um, Samsung is working with us on that, all the batteries seem to have been go- going at the same time, and it's by lot number. So you're gonna notice at CUS there were a hundred, so Samsung makes a batch of Chromebooks one month, they make a batch of Chromebooks the next month, it's all by that lot number. And for some reason, Morton's lot number was about three months ago, they were very high on repairs. It has since leveled off because they replaced most of the batteries, now it's CUS's turn because it was in that age where the battery was gonna fail. And if I had to forecast, Talbot's next because they're in that lot number. So what we're doing is we're replacing with district devices right now, and as soon as the device comes back, student gets their Vills device back. Um, learned a lot from the Vills program as far as. Just the in and out and the repair process, we've talked at um, length about the new incident I Q software. Um, it was not being used to its full potential, um, we've had some shifts with employees in the department, um, and some technicians. Um, I have an all star person working on that now, so now. The plan moving forward is at every Vills school, there will be a little check in and check outs, in, check in and check out station at the main office where. If I'm a student and I forget my Chromebook, I'm gonna be able to go up to that device, scan my I D card. I'll be assigned another Chromebook, but it's gonna track for us now, so if I have repeat offenders, and we've started to roll that information into incident I Q. And the plan will be moving forward, I'd like to roll it out to the high school next, okay? The middle, the elementary schools, I am not. Sold on running that and pushing that out there yet because they're not taking those devices home. They're using them in the classrooms right now, so if we get to a point where they stop moving back and forth, we will, however. If you're an elementary school student next year, what's gonna happen is, you're gonna be assigned. X Chromebook for the year, it'll be labeled, right now what happens in most of the elementary schools, they have thirty devices in the classroom. And the kids grab one from their stations and then they go work at the, at the device, because we're not going back and forth. But in the future, what I'd like to do is, we've talked about it with I D cards, every student's gonna have their I D card, they're gonna check out. Their device, and moving forward, we're gonna have some real um, control over the Chromebook piece, you know. It's a work in progress, there are gonna be hiccups, um, we're learning from those hiccups. Um, you guys have approved the digital device policy and that will allow us to. As administration, work with the building administration to hold people responsible, not just students, but staff members as well. Um, but I just wanted to give you guys an overview of numbers, um, at the high school, I can tell you. Roughly, we've had about four hundred and eighty repairs this year. And about forty nine to fifty two devices were destroyed, okay? Some of those were by accident, you know, uh, it was in my bag, I dropped it on the floor, it shattered, some of those were not. As a district, a- and you know, as the C I O, I need to do a better job to make sure that my people. Um, communicate with the building administration and hold the students and the staff responsible. And that's something that we're working on internally and, you know, I won't sleep until we know that the process is down, but I just ask that you know that. On the technology side, we're starting to lay that foundation and. I'm hopeful that this time, October, November, that we can come to you and say that. Yeah, we're gonna have broken devices, but we're gonna hold people responsible, and there's gonna be a much better system and process in place.
Any questions? Ms. Laramie?
So Scott, I, I respect all the work, I can imagine how much work went into this, and it's still. Moving forward gonna be, um, this is a heavy task, um, and I appreciate everybody's uh, efforts. Um, like I mentioned last meeting, the repeat offender, you know, I kind of brought that up and I can, I can tell that. You know, just by using a, a card, we'll be upset and wrath on the repeat offender, because let's face it, uh. So, we, we may get taken advantage of, we know that, right, we know that. So, um, I don't, I mean, I don't have a problem with any of this, I, I really don't have any questions, but uh. Uh, I admire the work that you guys have put into this, because this is not easy. So uh, with that, I yield, any more questions, maybe in the next week or two, I'll just reach out, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Um, extremely thorough presentation, really appreciated. Um, my question is strictly on um, the batteries, how you spoke. Um, kinda how, you know, Morton had a, a high rate of, of repairs and. Um, now we're, we're looking at CUS, is that something that Samsung takes care of or something that we pay for?
So right now, we're still on the warranty stage with the Vills program, next school year is going to be our last year under the warranty process. After next year, we own those devices bumper to bumper.
Okay.
Up until this point, they're replacing, I had actually reached out to Samsung and said, listen, you guys are killing me, I need these devices back. If I go out and buy aftermarket batteries and have my technicians replace in house, what does that look like? And the guy said, absolutely not, because as soon as you open that device, you own the device. So that's why, I could turn these devices around, I could get from a supplier, I could get batteries. But I don't wanna do that because then I'm gonna own those devices and they'll be out of the warranty process.
No, I, I definitely get that, I'm just, I, and I know it could be it's affected obviously, um, you know, the, the, the volume and. Um, us getting things back, but. Um, I don't know, this, it was just a question around, I have nothing to do with you, like the, the volume of, of laptops that we do buy. I don't see why you would have that many faulty and you just wouldn't replace them, um, it's just a comment more, more than anything.
And, and just to give you a little more background information on it, so those kids are using them all day long in school. So they're not trickle charging the devices like they should be, they're charging them overnight, they're letting them sit overnight, and Samsung, it's a design flaw on Samsung's side. And they're owning up to it and they're replacing them.
Yeah.
Plus it comes with the data package, so they're using the data at home also.
Yeah.
When um, when, when you, so their device breaks, they're using our devices though. So here we ask, Samsung, like the Vills program is saying, oh, we're gonna take care of this for years. But if it takes a year to get the spots, then they're using our device for a year, whereas Vills does give us the money for the year that our, our device is now a year older.
Well, the, the, it's not a whole year, it's not taken a year to do that, but.
I know, I know what you're saying, we're waiting six months in some instances, and when you sign, again. No one in this room signed the original Vills contract, but when you look at the contract, there is language in there that says. If Chromebook goes out for repair, if you don't have enough in your fleet for loner from the Verizon device. You're to supply a device, so going into this.
How mu- so how many did they give us extra?
They do not give you, it's a percentage based on the initial enrollment, and what happens is every year if your enrollment goes up. They supply you with a gap order, so every year you may get seventeen, twenty five new devices, cause you're.
So even though they know that there's a industry standard that certain amount is gonna break, they don't give us any extra.
No.
So, you know, I said it at the last meeting, I think at some point we need to. Do our own thing.
Well, it, it is going to expire.
You know, I've had a lot of complaints about Vills stuff getting out on uh, for months. Then I see there's a hundred and thirty five loners at Morton, there's been times there was no loners at Morton, and they were giving kids. Not even giving kids computers to give home, but they give homework, like, to see now a hundred and thirty five, it, 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 it's odd.
So, so Kevin, just so you know there, again, some of those numbers are based off of sending district devices for M cast testing, so they have spares. But also, there's been some movement in some of these buildings with technicians that no longer work for us, so. It wasn't done correctly until some of these people have been brought on and they're cleaning up the process from within. Um, goes back to the, the matrix. When we opened up this piece, the grant piece would only pay for so much of a position. Now we're putting the people in place that we need and they're cleaning up the process.
No, I get it, and it's not to place blame or anything, it's just, it's a system that wasn't working properly, so. When I look at the Vills or the school, like you had mentioned, Henry Lord has twelve hundred of. Twelve ninety, and then you add three oh five.
So they're gonna show.
So they got fifteen hundred devices in that place?
No, so if you look at it, so now that's three hundred and five Vills devices, okay? So that's also included in that larger number because it's part of the container that the, the Chromebook lives in.
So the first page has bills included in it.
Correct, it's a total number, yes, and don't forget that's a K to eight, so it's only gonna have, it's only six, seven and eight for Verizon program. And again, if you have a lab of forty desktops, if you have a spare cart that influ- that. Makes the number go up.
Yeah, we can, I'm just looking at the numbers now, yep, front page says Morton has under that.
Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen, when we slip to Vills, Morton has nine forty four. So the number is actually a hundred and thirty more than what's on the original page, which was supposed to incorporate more.
So what is probably happening there is the Chromebook number for students were pulled and it fluctuates daily because if it goes in or out for repair. It comes out of the system, um, and these numbers were pulled on different days just to give you guys an idea.
I get where you, you're on track, so I'm not giving you a lot of time, my concern and it's because I, I believe strongly that we need to hold. Schools accountable, we need to hold students accountable, we need to hold the teachers accountable and staff, we need to hold the parents accountable. I had, I don't think we've had control, as I said at the last meeting, of what they have, and if you just, like you said, oh, a kid. Uh, took his bag, put it in his bag and then threw it on the ground. And some people might think that's an accident, I don't consider that an accident, I think that is you're not taking care of your device. So if that breaks because you threw it on the ground, then you pay, or your parents pay, is me personally, to speak for myself. Because if we just keep on giving, eh, we don't have the money, like right now we have a pretty good budget, but this is. Gonna teach lessons that you have to take care of your stuff, and if we look at it, do we need a, a case, do we need a better case? Is it worth a case, like, that's all something for you to figure out, but when I look at the front page, what I'm gonna ask for. Is more granular numbers on what has been happening to the devices. So, I don't wanna pinpoint one school versus the other, but you should know, the district should know, the principal of the school should know. We've gotten through four hundred Chromebooks this year, we've attached any rules, regulations, or we just see, keep on, you break it, we give you another one. That's what I'm looking for, is to get a summary of that for the whole committee, so that we can get a handle on what happens. Because if Mrs. Ponce is the principal of one school and is holding a tight ship, you know, a tight line on the thing, and. Mister Raggy has the principal of another school and says, you know what, we just have the money, we'll give you another one, that's not fair. It's not right, it's not fair and it's not teaching similar lessons across all the schools, and I do think that that's what's happening in, across this district. I don't think we're consistent with what we have, some of these numbers are staggering, one of the middle schools is, is, just.
One, yes.
Just totally staggering and that is a major.
Yep, that we say this.
Gonna, gonna address, but I do appreciate the info, this is another one of um, when we get that. Like I said, the monthly dashboard type thing, this would be a good setup of how we're doing with some of this data, so. Not for next month, but as we get going, the whole committee, once a month could get a nice dashboard of, here's what our. Curriculum's looking like, here's what our usage is looking like, here's what our Chromebook's at, and it's actually gonna show people. We got thousands of devices going through here, we've got all kinds of, how many email addresses and emails we're sending, so we need to show the committee and the public. We have all of this stuff going on, that's gonna justify the matrix and all this, this year. Because what happens, I think people don't understand the enormity of the technology that we're dealing with, so then, oh, you're spending more, you're giving more positions, so. It's just, I think, a good.
Okay.
Uh, synergy, my last question though is on the Chromebook, and this issue came up with the issue with the. The kid that posted something inappropriate in, at Durfee, but I think it's important to address like what, as much as we can within the law. Of what, what happened with that, like, was that a Chromebook that, that, that the kids on, like, you know, cause they're on their devices, so, do they? The kid, uh, kids, my question would be, one is, what happened generally? And two is, what is the policy in the district about how many devices kids can bring to school?
Okay, so I can talk on the technology piece and then I'll let Maria talk about the rest, the incident. That is making its rounds on social media was, a student was able to create a handshake with. A device that streams our digital um, bulletin board that Fred TV runs, school information.
Using their phone.
Using their phone, so what happened was, it's called airdrop, okay, they airdropped to the device. In looking at it, it's been rectified, airdrop has been turned off, however, those devices were new to the district and that setting was buried. In settings that we weren't aware of, bottom line, we weren't aware of, and I will tell all of you, I've been in the technology realm for. Twenty five years, there are kids out there that are just, they're geniuses when it comes to this stuff, they just can figure it out. Lesson learned, devices have been locked, they're no longer able to get on, when it comes to a, and that was with a private cell phone. That was not anything to do with our network, it was literally Bluetooth from device to device, okay? When it comes to a school device, our devices are locked down via the Google console and relay by light speeds, or everything is filtered to SIPA compliance. Lockdown, everything is safe, um, I will say that we've had some issues with the wireless networks at the high school in the past week. Um, we shut the guest network off because there were some issues, the principal felt that there were some issues. Um, we created a staff guest network so that the teachers could connect, they could get text, that building is difficult with cell phones. We had another security breach in that network, so right now there are only two networks running in the building, student and staff. Over the last forty eight hours we've been watching, the student network has some holes in it, over the next day or two, we're gonna be changing things. Um, bottom line is. It's a monster, there are kids out there that can kind of penetrate, test the network. With the addition of some of these positions, I'm gonna be able to better contain some of that stuff. Because right now it's, it's, it's myself, I'm acting as the director of the department, the C I O, and a technician right now because we're down some technicians. So it's very difficult to keep a stronghold on that. So it's very difficult to keep a stronghold on that, our network is safe, but we've learned things over the last twenty-four to forty-eight hours. But I can assure that, the incident that we're talking about was not network-related, it was literally, I take my cellphone. Hey, look at that, I see something, and then we're gonna have a blast with it, it can no longer happen, the gentleman in this room. Is the one that figured it out behind me, he spent a long time on it, he's locked it down, we're not gonna have any issues moving forward.
But what was played, like, was it a movie, like multiple, like, was it?
Five second, five second clip.
You said second, five seconds. So it was like something popped up, and they addressed it right away, and so, I think that's important to, public meeting, I wanna let the public know. Everybody's honest about, like, what's this now, if it's five seconds, it's still, you're on it, it was a mistake, I get it, but it wasn't.
It wasn't a fifteen-minute video that played, absolutely.
Very clear to the public that it was a very limited type of situation, that shouldn't have happened, but. It wasn't a long, drawn-out thing, and they didn't, they didn't tap into our network.
They did not, and also, what I'd like to, to let the public know is, as soon as the individual that worked on the system to begin with. He got right in on it, he was sending me, uh, screenshots via his cellphone, cuz he was up on a lift looking at it, cuz he was that concerned. We were able to identify the name of the cellphone, but then also, for the education of the public. Our security system, cameras that were in the cafeteria, were able to zoom in on the screen, so we could also see. Because when you airdrop, it says so-and-so's iPhone is connected to this TV, so we were also able to use our security system. To actually figure out who it was, and I can say that the school administration did an investigation. Based off of what was shown on the screen and the name, uh, some individuals came forward and talked about it. The student admitted to doing what it was, and then the building administration, you know, followed their course of discipline on the student.
Anything bad?
No, that, it's being handled, it was immediate, it, it was not. I know that there was some conflicting, because yesterday even I, a parent approached me, and I said, no, it wasn't, they had heard, it was a fifteen-minute. Video, that's not the case, as soon as it popped up, it was immediately shut off.
Yeah.
And Alex was, can actually attest to that.
Yeah, I appreciate it, I just wanted to bring it up, because it's a technology meeting, it just happened, and I actually was wondering if it was a Chromebook. But my other question was on, what devices are allowed in the building?
So currently, right now, and it's something that I'd like to bring to a future technology meeting, is, uh, during Covid. Past administration had a BYOD policy, bring your own device, um, that policy is still in effect. There's some, uh, writing in the policy that says, if a teacher wants to allow cellphones in a classroom, they can, it's, it's very, um. It's an umbrella policy, but it allows the buildings to have control over what devices are in and what devices are not. Um, I'd like to, moving forward for next school year, I don't feel that there's a need for a BYOD policy, we're a one-to-one district. And we have control over those devices, so to secure things, I'd like moving forward to bring that policy in, and I think we. We sunset that policy.
I'll do you one better, I don't believe that we have the policy, that this committee ever voted on, of bring your own device to the schools. So I'd like to ask that it gets on the next agenda for the school committee, that the policy, in my opinion, was never voted on by this committee. This was, uh, sort of a person in charge just saying, oh, this, you know, whatever. Doesn't exist, as far as I'm concerned, we are paying for all these devices, which we just talked about. No student needs to be bringing in private devices, iPads, all of these other things, doesn't need to happen. They need to control it, and, and at this point, as far as I'm concerned, if you research it. I don't even think you need to come to us, that's a decision that you as the administrator can make, to say effective May tenth, or whatever the date is. No more devices other than our own devices, because I don't believe that we ever approved that policy, as we, uh, talked about. So if we didn't, and we need a, a change of the policy, I'd ask that it be on the agenda, so that we can do it, because why wait till next year? If we know it's not right, we can control it better, we should be able to control every single thing that happens in the, in that school.
Mm-hmm.
We have the program, whatever it's called, to monitor what the children are looking at, and students are looking at during the day in the classrooms. So that should be the only device available, so now, student is not paying attention, student is doing something off task, this, that, whatever. We shouldn't be getting calls saying the kid is texting videos, TikTok, and all this other stuff. No, the only thing they can get on is what's there, which is learning and schoolwork, so, I'm personally in favor of. Let's, let's get this straightened out right now, let's not wait till the end of the year.
And we will look at it, so.
Yeah, let's get it, yeah.
Also, because that's something we have to, uh, explore and address.
So I would say, let's put it on the agenda, whatever you feel is needed, even if it's open, and the thing, let the full committee debate it and go over it, but. I definitely think, uh, we need to start under, letting people understand that school's for education, not for this nonsense that they wanna continue to do. I'll work on it, any other questions on the new business?
No, but I'm glad you did bring that up, Ms. Aggie, I didn't think we were gonna have a chance, but I, I would, I, I liked the clarity part of it. Um, and just letting the public know that it wasn't a ten-minute issue in the school. Was on it, uh, very quickly, and the, the appropriate measures are being taken. So, I, I ju- I'm glad we did discuss it and get it out there, and, um. Um, that's all, and I do, I, I think if we need to revisit the policy on, on, on. I don't know, all that technology, uh, we, we need to do it, then, if, if something needs to be adjusted in the policy, then we need to adjust it. Uh, and bring it in front of the full committee, I mean, if, if Mr. Cabral is saying that it goes class by class, and the policy stating. Uh, it doesn't, then we have a small issue, not a big issue, but it, it, we just need to, uh, um, address. You know, as, as a full committee, so with that, I yield.
Agreed, so I'm entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Laramie makes a motion to adjourn, Mr. Bailey second, all in favor, I oppose, so voted, thank you very much, have a great night, great meeting.